Good evening, sorry, I'd like to welcome everybody to be starting the time of the meeting. First things first, I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please, the, please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and through our vote, we change the nation with God, in physical, whatever it is that's our life.
Okay, next, goal, sorry, PG, please.
Phil Plasky, Chief, please.
Krista Hyman, Township Manager.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jack Woodruff, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kilten, Township Solicitor.
Governor McAdams, Supervisor.
Kevin, Devin, Supervisor.
Laura McDever, Supervisor.
Ashley Hearn, Vice Chair, going again for Mr. DeSanto, who could begin? I'd like to announce that we all met for the executive session prior to this meeting, and I'd like to make a motion of the approval of our regular morning, uh, meeting, meeting minutes, excuse me, of April 18th, 2023. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second, right. Supervisor McAdams, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, we have citizens to be heard. Any citizens who want to come in here? All right, put just your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name's Kim Henderson, I live at 109 Hilltop Avenue, and this is Peg Henderson, and she lives at 2934 Stony Creek Road. Good evening, everyone. I am a committee woman at East Norton 24, which includes Stony Creek Road. My constituents, including my mother-in-law, who makes her a double constituent, uh, she lives on Stony Creek Road, they asked me to express their 100% disagreement with the proposal of one-sided parking between Penn Square Road and Germantown Pike on Stony Creek Road. I'm also a realtor here in Montgomery County, and know the challenges that this proposed parking ban on the sidewalk side would cause for property values. The Penn Square buildings were built in the 1950s when residents had barely one car parked in the driveway. Homes on the street have had up to five cars, plus some commercial vehicles on Stony Creek Road, plus visitors. Still, there's never a time where both sides of Stony Creek Road has cars parked bumper-to-bumper, and in fact, uh, at 6:42 this evening, uh, I drove from Penn Square Road to Germantown Pike and I counted 17 cars parked sporadically on both sides. The letter that residents received about this proposal uh, says that the, um, the reason that they're doing this study concluded that there should not be parking on the side of the road that has sidewalks is to allow fire departments more easily identify and access fire hydrants in the event of a fire incident along the provided, uh, areas. And I counted also between Penn Square Road and Stony Creek Road, uh, three fire hydrants. One in Green Hill and Stony Creek, which is on the corner, uh, one in Beechwood, and one at 2939 Stony Creek Road. Uh, two of those are on a corner, and so, uh, I just have some proposals to consider rather than limiting the parking to one side of the street. We have, uh, some concerns about the buses, the school buses, that fly up and down Stony Creek Road, including the ones that don't, are not picking up children. They're the ones that are just cutting through the, uh, development on their way to Roland Drive to East Norton Middle School. East Norton Middle School is situated on Town Line Road and has plenty of access in, through that, uh, through that direction. We would also propose to enforce speed limits. Uh, we would propose to enforce parking regulations within 30 feet of the corners. And, uh, yeah, we do know that there's some areas that there's congestion where the houses that do have five cars parked there, uh, you know, perhaps if we look at where they're parked, where they're situated, they're parked right in front of corners. And so, if we look at the corner of Stony Creek and Roland Drive in particular, I know they did widen their driveway there that would alleviate some of the problem. Um, we, you know, we just, just have these concerns as to why are we even exploring this at this time? Okay, is there anything we'd like to add?
Can I add, Mr. Roper?
Well, yeah, I want to comment with this man, I'm sure, he would be sure, just to give you some feedback, so I don't forget. What, what's going on down here? Um, just to give you a little bit of feedback, because I'm not everybody knows. The only reason this was even discussed initially was we had numerous residents ask about it, and we said, whoa, we would have to do a study to even see if anything made sense with it. Um, much less about access to the fire hydrants. Since I've been here, there have been comments about fire trucks at times, as you can imagine, going around some of the curbs, uh, curved areas, which are some of the problems when there's two sides. Um, but they're the reasons we did additionally say, we'll do a study and then bring it to the residents. This is going to go from now, literally, to the fall, because we've probably spoken to 12% of the residents, to speak to every resident on the, on the street, deliberately so. Because if I have five residents that wanted this, I gotta explain it to everyone, we're gonna go out and continue, we're out there week to week, and get everybody think, it's your street. There's no way you're trying to push something on your street that they don't want, I get it. And first of all, if I live on the side with no sidewalks, where do you want them to park? Probably, maybe 70%, the neighbors are gonna say, no, you can't park on my side, I get it. Uh, we've all discussed that, so, um, there's nothing being pushed, there's, it's literally exactly what you brought up, those ideas. We have a list of the people we have spoken to, said maybe it should just be on the curb areas, or deal with some of the corner stuff, which fully makes sense to everybody that we've discussed it with so far, so. I just, I understand it, I appreciate what you're putting out there, I understand that we're doing that as well. We're taking notes, who are going, nothing's happening, it would be, you would be notified a month before, if any, even if it was just on the curb. So don't think there's anything happening right away, I just want to assure you that, because I have to certain people I've spoken to already, but not to everybody, because we've only spoken to so few.
Thank you for that, um, we definitely appreciate it. And then just, the last part of that, these two houses in particular are the ones that are two, that are facing one another, so they have even less frontage in front of their homes, and they both have families, so our concern falls into when we have, you know, holidays and that kind of stuff. And so, I think that's the only time you're gonna see more than these 17 cars ever parked on Stony Creek Road. So, thank you so much for your time.
And, and Stony Creek calls a special place to my heart because they used to live on Stony Creek Road. And I know exactly what you're talking about, that then the bus is coming through, it's, 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 it's.
Yeah, they fly through there.
So, I'm, I'm here for you, like, I, I get it.
The other thing, just, you know, since you said that, when you see the buses flying through, I think they go slower because cars are parked on both sides. Otherwise, they're just gonna let it go, you know? So, okay, thank you so much, you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Haggriff, uh, I live 2932 Stony Creek Road, right in the heart of the proposal. Okay, this proposal, so 35, 37 years ago, was brought to the board, same identical plan, okay? It was next, okay, back then, and nothing has really changed, except for probably the speed of trash trucks, buses, FedEx, UPS, overweight landscape trailers, okay? During the day, on retirement, so home, most of the day. That is a drag strip from Roland to Woodland. They tap the brakes, go through that stuff, sign, tap the brakes, and, uh, which I think, I go through that on the Germantown Pike. Okay, these trash trucks, if they ever lose control, or the school buses, they're in life, they ever lose control, they're gonna throw a house. With the parking on both sides, it slows you down a little bit, okay? Now, some of yous here that may live out, whatever, you have, you know, it takes an extra 10 seconds to come to work here, but to stop once or twice, it's too bad. We live there, what do you do with this? Okay, this is never really, but you've got a cop out there one or two days, of course, people slow down, but they don't, they don't fault the turnip truck on the way there. They know, they know, uh, you know, they're only gonna be around two days, and they don't do about their business. So what I'm saying is you got a, now on the safety issue of, of these, these big vehicles, they have automatic transmissions now, okay? And they put them in because they couldn't get drivers to drive trucks or school buses, so now they just about put anything in, and not really qualified, and you're, okay, they're, they got, they got CBHs that say they're, they're qualified if, if a restriction of police department. But in order to get, to be good at your job, you gotta practice, okay? If I take a couple golf lessons, that don't be on the offer. You gotta, you, you gotta practice, okay? So these guys and the fire trucks, okay? I took track of travel 45 years, New York City, Baltimore, Washington state alike. Heck of a lot smaller streets and mess and alleys, I had to navigate that thing and get around. But takes practice, I was there with this hell of a first couple of years, until you adjust. There's one area that I would suggest we address. That is maybe 20 to 30 yards before Roland Drive, okay? Quick, make, make, do something there, because that does get tight down. Now, one of the residents just widened driveways so maybe that will eliminate some of the cars that sit there, but we don't know that. Okay, because he's the way to park in the street if he wants to. But if you put some restrictions in that area, that's one thing. But turn around and put restrictions on everybody down that street, all the way down to the stop sign or down to the driveway, whatever you wanna do, is ridiculous. You got safety issues with folks, teenagers, women at nighttime coming home. If just a teenager parks by the next, in front of their house, because like I said, one of the houses over there are one line, or one driveway, one car driver. Okay, so people today, with the times, you got two, three, four people working, and I'm found these now, they gotta find a place to park. You put restrictions in a park with a lawn, okay, you're gonna park the neighbors, and they park the neighbors, and say, I want to cut my grass early in the morning, I think neighbors still sleeping. Am I supposed to sandblash his car, my, my lawnmower? Or, and now I'm gonna get into a fight with the neighbor, now we got, now we got a neighbor problem. So, we want to eliminate that as well, alright? So I'm asking the board to consume the area 20, 30 yards in that band, now you're not, you know, like I said, I can get them out with a tractor trailer, they can get them out with a fire truck. And I drove for a fire truck for, for 15 years at Sweetburg. So, it takes judgment, okay? It seems, you get a 16-year-old car, the first year he has that car, it's rounded the heck off, because you can't judge a damn thing. So, these big trucks, you gotta learn to judge it. You gotta practice, 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 make progress. So we're trying to ask you, I don't need somebody in front of my house, like I said, if I got company, come with something I got there, I got spotlights, I got cameras in my window glass. I'm not doing it for my neighbor, I'm not doing it for you, I'm not doing it for anyone, do it for me, my family. Okay, I paid the bill for it, my family. So, again, when you're considering this proposal, keep in mind that it's only one area that's tight. Without my street, there's no mirror or no wire than any other street that's so attached that you don't have a proposal for.
Yeah, and I'm totally, um, on board with that, you know what I'm saying, I appreciate your expertise. And I think what, what Bob is trying to say, and Mr. Hart's trying to say, is that we're just exploring it because other neighbors have brought it to our attention, so.
Well, here's what I don't get, though.
But, but I hear you, and, um, it's not gonna, if nothing is gonna get proposed, it's like you're just doing a study.
What is this attention, I don't, you mentioned it to, uh, when, uh, Ms. Henderson was screaming, what, what, what's this attention, people, what attention? What does that give you attention, about what?
Um, numerous things about Stony Creek. Um, why, if you notice, we did do some things, we added some stop signs, as you know.
Yeah, one way or the other, yeah, long way, they had both stop.
Definitely to go somewhat of, um, to cut down that speed, as you know. Um, so we did that, um, there was a lot of wanting, a dozen speed tables throughout. There was one side parking, um, quite frankly, not just on Stony Creek, through the whole area, which I, which is why I said, let's do a study. You can do anything, uh, we know that, right? You're always gonna get a study that says you can't do it, uh, in most things. Hope it makes sense. Part of this was exactly what you're doing on the, now, and we have a spreadsheet of what other people have said, because I wanted to be able to go to everybody, the people who wanted it really badly, and say, hey, this is the feedback I got from your neighbors, that this makes more sense. And I think, um, where you're talking, right past, right, you get the roller, and going around there.
Absolutely.
That's been unanimous, that people in that area have said, that's the most concerned. It's been unanimous. And I can tell you, everybody here that deals with it would do the same thing, you know? So, I wouldn't expect any, um, we will talk about this in, in great detail, and maybe there'll be some small change like, like that, or travel.
How about, uh, how about, uh, Whitsley, Speedball's?
And, and maybe.
This road is a drag strip. This girl, she lived there for years, she had an annoyed sign out front to slow down, and verbally said some stuff at times, to, you know, to, to people just, I don't know how they make that dance sometimes. So, okay, again, if you can't get two-sided parking, it slows them down. Now, going today, when, when everybody's at work, you know, they're nuts, so.
And this stuff is truly gonna be part of the, of further discussion, I assure you.
Oh, sure hope so.
We're not trying to push this in any manner, in any matter. This wasn't, this was organic from, I say, hey, you gotta do something there, so, uh, the buses, and it's the same complaints that you're even saying.
Crazy.
The response is different. The response goes, well, if you do this, that, well, clearly there's a mixed response, and maybe a, a location response, that makes a lot more sense. We're not looking deep, like I said, I knew, right, right? If I live on one side, I'm gonna be more forward on the other side, then, that's just natural, right? I mean, I.
I don't need somebody's oil drop and jump in front of my house. Like, I spent a lot of money keeping my property, you know, up to par.
I agree 1000%.
I don't need somebody else to slop there, or dope in their ashtrays, or, or pork, or napkins. And then, of course, I'm gonna come over your house and let you know about it.
Well, I don't want drops, so. No, I, 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 I don't want either.
All right, well, like I said, I just wanted to, hopefully, look at center, but I guess, uh, and, uh, go from there.
Thank you so much.
And if I could take one last thing, um, you're the only other person I know who uses the turn, turnip truck. Roper, I feel good, I don't.
You know what, none of you folks were here about the last 37 years ago, it was a whole different outfit, so. So, and, and the turnip truck, some of the old boys would understand, falling out of a turnip truck.
I love it, I love it.
And, and I'm glad you never met, you explained it to somebody younger when they helped us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I'm ready to share a chat when we're in kind of train 321. Um, I just wanna bring up, it's not just Stony Creek, it's going from Germantown down Penn Square, they use it as a cut through. And on Brookside, nobody stops, I, you know, I walk my dog through the neighborhood every night, and one person, I walked right across the street, this, you know, she went right through the stop sign, and I'm like, what are you doing? She stopped, she's on her phone, she's like this, and I'm like, oh. And it's, they need to do something up there, because I see it constantly, they speed right down there, down Stony Creek.
And Stony Creek's so wide, I understand, some people feel they can just, um.
Yeah, Penn Square.
Penn Square, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I see it all the time, and every night, it's like, there goes another, there goes another, you know? I think you get on our car as a sitter, you know, if they can make a mint.
And, and I can say this, and that, I don't have to speak for the chief, because he, he knows this, um, well and good, but it's truly every street, it's just about every street this township. Every town, every township I go to or speak to anyone, people don't stop stop signs, they drive too damn fast.
They need, they need.
Everyone is more than ever on their, you know, um, in this major hurry. We tried and we put a lot of areas, we put the stop bars and white paint to try to get people to pay more attention, because the reality is I'd have to hire 400 more cops to, to really do what, I mean, let's, let's be real, I can drive right now, go down Sunset, and it'll blow your doors in with some of it, and we're constantly out there, but we have to try all these other measures. That's why we have those digital speed signs to make people aware, like, slow the heck down, because, you know, your kids in mind, but. It's a constant challenge, I, I promise you, and I talked to everybody in, around the county, it's the same challenge, and we're trying every method we can, um, to try to curb that, that problem, so.
It's not a flaw, I, I want myself to have a bright light, you know, so you can walk with them, and they're driving like toward me, and I'm like shining it right on, you know? Oh, there's somebody there.
Well, I'm sure you'll continue to try every method we have, we, we, we do, and we take all these things.
You're also well aware, 70% of people that come down Stony Creek are cutting through from other townships. Okay, they come down Green Hill, down Stony Creek, onto Germantown Pike, instead of going Sweet Road down Germantown. So it's a major cut through, so they're trying to get from point A to point B as fast as they can, and there's no, there's no restrictions till Stony Creek. So from Roland to, uh, Woodland, it's hell-bent, now let's go.
Well, look, and I'll talk to the chief and Public Works as well. Um, maybe I can put out there, when we start talking, if there's some interest, you'd be surprised, uh, a speed table in the right place, they'd make some sense. Um, I promise you, as much as everybody in this room may say, hey, that'd be great right there, I'll have 40 people that say, you're pretty, get that the hell out, I mean, it's just the way it goes. But I will, I will share that information as well, because I think it's a viable option that everyone should talk about, so, stay tuned.
The speedball thing might be worth looking into, and that's the truth, it's, like you said, the school buses.
I hear you, it's, it's a tough one.
And, and, the trash trucks, the trash trucks, they're nuts, they're nuts too. Okay, and like I said, these automatic transmissions now, which years ago, you had to slow down, you take the full axillary shit up here, so you couldn't get the speed up. Now, they manage it, because the way the road of Roland on Stony Creek, it's to the floor, all the way down, tap the brakes at the first stop sign, go, you got the house that lives right there, how many times he's, his cameras, well, in fact, there's some times, times, fishes at his house, or some boat thing, they saw it. Okay, so it's, it's gotta be.
Okay, now, we'll, we'll be, stay tuned, we'll, we'll have more information for you, some more ideas, absolutely.
Hopefully, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one last thing about the letter that was sent out. The reason why I felt as urgent as I did tonight, it says, the results of the study concluded that parking should not be allowed there, so it made it sound like it was a.
Yeah, I agree, it's a little bit, it should have been, yeah. And it said, it really meant, it could, you know, it wasn't going to, yeah. So, I'll, stay tuned for more, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments by the board supervisors? Moving on to old business, there's none new business?
Okay, Resolution number 2882, reaffirming East Norton Township's emergency operations plan. I'd like to call on our chief, please, Phil Plasky, to update us on that.
Thank you very much. So this is an updated version of the, uh, notification resource manual, which is the, uh, the real meat and potatoes of the Emergency Operations Plan. Uh, as you recall, last year, we completely revamped the NARM, put in additional information, took elements of the Emergency Operations Plan, put it into the NARM. We've now updated it, and we continue to work on this and the Emergency Operations Plan.
Any comments by the board? That's new form motion, and we'd like to second Resolution number 2882, reaffirming East Norton Township's emergency operations. Thanks, Stephanie and Bud, Supervisor McAdams, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, authorize the sale of a township vehicle through Minnesota. I would like to call in our manager, uh, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Supervisor McDever. Um, as you know, we had a, we had an unfortunate accident in one of our vehicles, 2022 Ford Explorer. Um, the vehicle doesn't look so bad, but it damaged the front axle and frame, um, total, the car. Our insurance has taken care of that issue, however, we have to get rid of this machine that's, is deadened to the can at this point, that's sitting in our Public Works yard. So, uh, we need authorization from the board tonight to put it on Minnesota, and hopefully we'll come back next, next meeting, and have it, it's brought to support for sample.
Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, Fina, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the sale of the township vehicle through Minnesota. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, second, right, Supervisor McDever, are all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Moving on to change order number two, parking reclamation. I would like to call on Township Manager Bob Hart to review this item, and I want to thank him for, um, giving us a little sneak preview of how well the building is coming along. I'm very excited about the future and all the amazing activities that I have to handle.
Thank you, Supervisor McDever. Um, as you know, our multi-purpose building down there is coming along, coming along quickly, thank, thank God. It's part of our, you know, for our senior programs that are growing and growing and growing, and we have a lot of internal stuff looking into it, um, besides our summer camp and all of those, um, uses that we're really looking to have a tremendous, um, resource there for us. As you know, when we, uh, recently did, uh, when you approved the original, um, plan, we had expanded it a little bit to put some offices, some storage in there, and also to add a more extensive sprinkler system to the building. Um, that is what, that is the change order that's before you tonight, it's really all of these, these tweaks, and we discussed there was going to be that change order, uh, coming. So that is before you tonight, this change order in the amount of $259,097, and we expect it to be ready for, substantially ready for camp, um, June 18th through the 20th, and over the next month, it'll finish.
That'll wait for council.
And let me say this, for, for anyone who has a friend or they are interested in pickleball, because, uh, as you know, I can't believe this pickleball craze, I, I, I get emails and calls about it at all times. There's going to be, able to have free indoor pickleball, of course, all winter long, which I assume you'd say, you lose large population, you're smiling, who's reminded of that, because it's been really popular. So, um, we're looking forward to getting it done and really having a great end of summer, fall there, so.
Awesome, any questions, Sir, from the board? Okay, Fina, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order number two for the parking reclamation. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second advice, Supervisor McDever, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Esquire release number 10 for Bradbury Point. I'd like to call in our township engineer, Chris Hyman, to look at that a second.
Thank you, Supervisor McDever. Uh, for your consideration is Esquire release request number 10 for Bradbury Point in the amount of $12,368.25. Our office has inspected the site and found any permits to have been reconstructed and closed with the first plans, and we're recommending release in that amount.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Fina, I'd like to approve the Esquire release number 10 for Bradbury Point. Do I have a second on that motion?
Awesome.
Okay, second advice, Supervisor McDever, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, motion carries.
Authorization for a RFP for service related to traffic signal maintenance and repair. I'd like to call on, uh, our, uh, now.
Just kidding.
Yeah, it's gonna say, it has you there. We're messing with me, huh? Hi, uh, Finance Director, Mr. David.
Thank you, Supervisor McDever. As you are aware, the township is responsible for maintaining traffic signals on the roads throughout East Norton Township. And we do have currently outsourced that, we have a contract with the Charles Higgins and Sons out of media for those services for traffic signal maintenance and repair. Um, they're a highly qualified company, they do a fantastic job for us. Uh, the issue is that our original contract was issued, uh, original three-year contract was issued to them in 2015. Um, we had all the intentions of 2018 to revisit this and send it out from RFP, RFP, RFP. Uh, we had a series of events that took place in 2018, that we envisioned doing it a couple of years later, 2020 occurred. Uh, now we're finally getting back to it. And it's part of our regular process of routinely looking at our contracts, making sure that we're getting the best possible services for the best possible prices. So, what we're asking tonight is that the board of supervisors authorize township staff to issue a request for proposals for interested firms to perform traffic signal maintenance and repair services, including preventative inspection and maintenance of traffic signals, emergency response and repair of traffic signal-related issues, and, uh, any other services related to traffic signals. I'd be delighted to answer any questions we might have.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, I would like to make a motion to authorize your request for proposals for RFP for services related to traffic signals, maintenance and repair, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second advice, Supervisor McDever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, motion carries.
Authorization to request, uh, for an RFP for pension plan services. Um, I'd like to call my head, Chris McDever, to discuss this.
Thank you, Supervisor McDever. Uh, again, as I mentioned, we.
Again, as I mentioned, we routinely go through our professional services contracts, reviewing them, making sure that, once again, we're getting our quality services at our best responsible prices. You may recall that on February 25th, 2020, the board actually authorized us to issue a RFP for these exact same services. You may recall also that a short three weeks later, the township offices were closed as well as most businesses nationwide. And needless to say, this slipped through the cracks for the next many, many months. So once again, we're revisiting this. Our current provider is Comrade Siegel out of Harrisburg. They currently provide our administrative actuarial and investment services and they do a fantastic job. Charles Schwab is our administrative services that handle all of our pension checks and administrative paperwork. Again, they do a fine job as well. But it'd be remiss for us not to go out and issue this RFP, encouraging those same companies to participate in it as well. But once again, make sure that we're getting those highest quality services for the best possible prices. So tonight, township staff is asking the board to authorize township to issue a request for proposal to interested firms for pension plan investment, custodial, actuarial and administrative services. And once again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So I should have asked them the item we just reviewed and approved as well. So it's multiple services, so it's actual multiple RFPs.
That is correct. Well, it's going to be one RFP, multiple services. There are very specific state requirements under Act 44, I think it is, that dictate how we have to send this out. So we'll be doing one, but we'll be sending it, it'll have different segments in it for firms to be able to.
We can bid on what you were.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Being that I'd like to authorize, authorization to equip to RFP for pension plan services. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second of vice supervisor Devanis, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, any non-mission carries?
Resolution number 2883. Authorize the application for the Growing Greener Grant Program for the stormwater treatment wetland project. Again, calling our township manager Bob Parks to review this item.
Thank you, supervisor Devanis. I'll just start on the, the slight bit on this and then I will ask our township engineer, Krista Heimrich, to, to talk a bit more. This is her world. Actually, Jim Sullivan, who is in the Netherlands visiting his daughter, it was, this is his basin. It deals with a, a project that is at the headquarters of the Stormwater coming from Warsaw. It's a project that won't cost us anything. We're just going to be a sort of a signatory to some degree onto this potential grant and we get it. But it will have significant effects for our MS4, for the, our MS4 requirements and the creek itself. And anything more technical, I will let our interviewer do that.
Yeah, I mean, I can add that while this is in the adjacent township as a multi-municipal partnership that goes far in the, in our MS4 requirements and our key, our key plan, which is our pollution reduction plan. So not having seen the technical details of this basin yet, I don't know what those numbers will be, but it certainly will be helpful towards meeting the township's goals in our MS4 requirements.
And if we can get the grant, we don't go it, so it's all, you know, it's, it's all safe if we get the grant and go from there.
Any questions or comments from the board? Being that, resolution, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2883, the authorization of the application for the Growing Greener Grant Program for the Stormwater Treatment Wetland Project. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second of vice supervisor Rivera, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And monthly expenditures. I would like to call on our financial director, Mr. David Price.
Thank you, supervisor McDavid. Presented to the board tonight are the township expenditures for the month. More specifically, our expenditures from our, the day of our last board meeting to the day before this current board meeting. And those expenditures total to $1,134,648.53. Our accounts payable expenditures, those payments for utilities, supplies, services, they totaled $559,670.56. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, were $574,977.97. Tonight, township staff is asking for the board's approval of these expenditures. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions to come to the board? Okay, being that I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures from April to May. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second of vice supervisor Devanis, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Any questions?
Thank you, Metaphys Chair. Just like, just a couple of things. We had a great concert the other night, concert choir was well attended, it was really great event. It's, you get a credit. It's really the start of our summer concert series, so I, you know, stay tuned, there's a lot of information. I know we have a shop, shop of Southern coming in a couple of weeks, June 29th. So stay tuned for that. Active, a lot of work going on for our parks and park departments, which are really heating up, I'm sure you saw it. So stay tuned for a lot going on there. If you bid by Heroes Park, our township staff has done a ton of work ripping up the old Cabaret Earl Park, ripping up a lot of that concrete jungle that was down there and, and chopped up, that was all removed and it's been returned to green space and it's dramatic change. Our township staff is, has done all the big street painters on the parking lot and by next week, it will be repaved and restrengthened. A really fundamental change for that park. There's still some, some ideas for, of there, also some stormwater projects that we may be granting to help with the potential low area in front of the condos, which in the worst of storms gets flooded out. So we have some things in the works there, some other ideas going forward of the next year or two, but that park has really been transformed and it's really leading around the leading small pocket park in, in nearby communities. Outside of that, we're working hard, township staff is out there every day. Grace is growing every three days. We have to cut again, so our, our code enforcement out there, we're not, we're trying to be gentle reminders, rather than go out unless it's too high, but we realize how quickly sometime you get two days rain, one day of sun and it's up. So it's just for people to know we're, we're cognizant of that and I'm trying to, but we're, you know, you have neighbors and you have to be, you have to be careful and cognizant of what they, what your neighbors have to live, live next to. So stay tuned for all of these types of updates at our next meeting. The summer should be an interesting time, a lot more updates on Stone Creek and along with any of the other projects and issues that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. John. Okay, our next meeting, board's meeting will be on June 27th. And of course, if you ever have any questions about our meetings, it's always on the internet. EastNarn Township dot com. Any citizens to be heard? Is this to be heard on the, is there any online?
No, almost online.
Okay, thank you.
I, I should have said, I meant, I meant to give you up there. So the dawn part there is, is partially on east Narn and west Narn over by the school. That's a dual, a joint project. West Narn has told the NPDS permit is about to be submitted within the next 10 days. They can't start the project till they get that.
I figured if they started it, it's pretty soon it'll be over.
That's what we had hoped. So the NPDS program permit, once they get that, they can start the whole thing. There's been an initial committee in process for me now. I just put one of our parks and park staff on it, they have, about to meet at the first meeting. I'm going to ask that we have a resident or two from each be part of that. So we just got the email about it, so stay tuned for that, I know you're interested and, and others. So hopefully, hopefully.
That makes sense. I haven't worked it. I don't know, sounds.
I, I can tell you, the permit, they just told me the permit's going to be in the first week of June, so.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
Hi, Brendan Leon, for items, just so we could give you a quick summary of what we're doing with Aqua.
Aqua is, we are currently in litigation with Aqua. It is, I know our Sean's, one of his colleagues was, is leading it. We are part of the Consumer Advocates Litigation and I will say, I know they were just breaches or something.
They, they responded like a.
Yeah. The schedule about, is about a quarter, put out briefing schedule. That's one. I don't want to get into too many details on the second part of it, but you may know by next, by next meeting. There's a second litigation process that is in the process of coming together until that initiates officially. I don't want to comment on it, but stay, by next month, I suspect I'll have an update of that. So we'll have to, again, for any, and you may hurt this, but our litigation is really saying, you agreed to a contract, follow the damn contract. Don't do a bait and switch. Don't say, yes, we followed the rating, but we changed how we, we changed the structure of how we rated things. That's not, so that's where we're at, we're wholly, and we, it's not just us, there's another municipality that are working to. I don't want to, I don't want to say too, too many things negative about it until it's actually official that next step, but they have to adhere to the contract at the earliest they saw.
Thank you. Different topic, do I have to stand by it?
No, it's okay.
So just based on that piece about Aqua, I do just want to also express my concern about the trash expedition that we're doing for the same reason, you know, anti-trash laws. We, we have a system in place for competition and again, very concerned when we try to centralize these things because the next thing you know, we're being, our prices are being jacked up and that's not the intent, clearly, you guys are trying to do a good job to, to form an exploratory, but I don't share concern based on this situation with Aqua that we can encounter in trash.
If I can give you a little.
Sure.
A little background on the trash thing. The only business is coming up, well, I started here seven years ago, there are nine trash haulers in East Narn. Right now, there's one and a half.
Yep.
Because one will do the whole township, well, a second one will only do half the township, then it will add no new ones. That's really the only, I mean, I, I get it. We've had people where they only have one in this township and they, they sued the trash hauler. Now they have to take their trash in their car, so that's the only, you know, they're saying we're going to be a simple hauler in there.
Yeah.
So that's why we put it out. Now I will say we have, you'd be shocked at this, right, because we internally are. So we have, you saw the, we have about 30% return. If you do a survey, you get 30% return, that's like nuts, crazy amount, right? Most people ignore it. So that's a major return and the board doesn't even notice, but they know generally. I think there's, you can, you can give a, there's less than six votes differently between find out more information and not find out. Now, remember, even finding out for more information isn't saying go private.
Absolutely.
It's saying, get prices and get what do they promise and how does it compare? Because we, you know, that is that, but I think there's another couple, another week or two left. We are shocked at it's 49. something, 49. something. I mean, and I'm going to give all, I'm going to put it on, put it out on Facebook so people understand. This is, nobody in here will admit that, they all, they obviously do. So I'm sure some of them love their trash hauler and some, no matter, I won't ask them particularly. But there's no, we're just responding to some residents that are like.
And I definitely want to say thank you for your transparency that I experienced this evening, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your questions and for coming. One, one thing has been unlearning through this process as well. A distinction between this situation and the situation with Aqua is the state trash haulers are, are not regulated in the same way that.
Yeah, there's no.
Public utilities are. And so that's been part of the, what, what we perceive as a potential topic of interest with Aqua that may have led to some of our, our issues.
There's some, there's some interesting issues with this. Again, there's a concern, I don't want to say too much, there's all, there's a concern that if there's an agreement, you have the, we are going to assure, otherwise the litigation that you follow, there won't be any. And, and that, there are agencies that make sure that happens and we are going to them as well. So state agencies, yeah. I know it's a little bit, I'm not trying to be that way, but.
The, the other contrast I would draw is, I mean, when, when, when you're talking about our municipal store, you're talking about massive infrastructure, right? Whereas a, a trash hauler is a service provider, just like any of these other RFPs we approved, you know, covered under any of these RFPs we approved. So, so yes, you can argue if we put this out there, we might be able to actually attract more competition to, to the township.
Well, and I mean, I think that's where the thing was, where learn more information. And what more information is purely just going out and saying, hey, if you have, hey, you ten people, if you have this, what would you offer? How much would you pay? And say, here, again, it's not bad.
And there's an opportunity to structure the agreements in such a way that we can reevaluate them on our work.
Oh, yeah, and you, and you know, two or three a year and that kind of thing. But you know, our concern, because it literally came to us about the one and a half, which is strange to me. One side of the railroad, they will let, when new people ask this one company and the other side, they won't. I don't know where that comes from, but if one goes out, if, if, if you're one now, goes that one. And I'm not casting expersions, but that one could raise whatever they wanted. So we just wanted to, once we got all this feedback, we thought, let's, let's get all the information because you're all residents. I mean, it's just the way it is. I know everybody in here wants the best deal, but, but the best, the most control, they don't want to be put, they want to be put out there and have their interest and their decision-making just rip from them. I wouldn't want to either. By the way, I have the, I have a, for my township, I have a simple hauler and I can play my head without my serial controller. So I, I get it and it happens all the time, everywhere, every place deals with these same issues. So one thing, the mail that did come out by a certain trash hauler that we all received that didn't say the trash hauler's name, I know more of them than we come out. Apparently, that trash hauler has decided to send more of those out. So you would probably six other, six other municipalities. That's a new advertising method, so don't be shocked if you see that part of the mail. It's nothing to do with the township, that's what I'm here about.
The other thing I'll just put out there, because again, this was, this was news to me, but I think it's important, given how close the election is, if you will, that there, there have been controls put in place as we've administered the survey to limit one vote per, per township, registered household.
Yes, you can't just.
So it's, it's not like the ballot's been stuffed on either side of this exploratory discussion.
You can stack, but even the ones that, that are paper.
Yeah.
Maxwell Smart here, Mr. Chris.
Compared.
Got a certain kind of paper with watermarks, so they can't, it can't be, I, I, you know, so. I know not really is a Maxwell Smart reference, but you know, a little intrigued, I know, I know, it's, I'm dating myself, but.
And, and we are happy to, to report that so far, there's the, the errors on returns. Duplicate entries, it must have been mistakes where people accidentally resubmitted after they thought they submitted, it's, it's very, very few, so.
I thank God, we worried about this, I, I know.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Robert Bailey, I'm in East Narn. I'm a little confused about the sale of the, the damaged truck.
Yes.
An insurance company paid us for it.
Yes.
So why didn't they take the merchandise, we're going to sell something that they've already paid us for?
Yes, I'm not.
Wow, okay, never mind, I just wanted to ask that question, it's confusing to me. My second thing is.
If you sold, I'll show you a picture of the.
No, 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 no.
But I know what you mean.
Yeah, exactly, okay, now, second thing is, Mr. Chris, our billing is out of line. You know, April, what we're paying, what we're not, you know, those, those things that you said that were, you know, taxes.
They're presented to the board for their approval.
Yeah, I know, but it's. Yeah, I know, but is it doable by the constituents as to what our township is doing?
Oh, and after the minutes are approved, they put on the website and it's viewable by anyone.
Okay, so it is on. Okay, now my last question is for our engineer, where is the wetland project?
It is in, where, where's that? Worcester Township.
Worcester, where's Worcester Township?
It's a little private, the private landowner is a person doing this at Skipback and.
Wow. Okay, I didn't know who that was. It just doesn't.
We're sisters, so the township line on one side is Eastnarn, the other side is.
Yeah.
Worcester.
Okay.
But in terms of lanes into the Stony Creek. We're on Boyd and Hall Road, Westnarn Way up there.
And Mr. Bailey, before you, before you go in front, just so I can, because you may not be the only one, we have a, an unfunded state mandate. I mean, Mr. Coleman is this quite well, but the state is trying to get pollutants out, right? Pollutants out of our, out of our streams, out of our waste system, whatever.
I understand.
So we're required to do all of this stuff and get so many points. And that's why this, and it's unfunded. So that's why we go for grants because otherwise.
Yeah, I just didn't know where it was. I guess that doesn't tell us where, why, you know, I might have a problem.
Yeah, no.
I had it on the map as we were talking. Where Morris Road turns into North Wells Road.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I apologize for that. Mr. Sullivan, who's in the Netherlands, again, that's his, this is his baby.
Why, yeah, this is, again, very, I had no idea where this Golden Creek is from, towards here to find its way through Eastnarn Township, so.
All right. Any, any citizens to be heard? Okay. All right, Bina, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the township meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Maria. All those in favor?
Aye.